I'd like to call this regular scheduled meeting of the City Commission to order. And it's time I'd like to call upon Commissioner Cidio Chino Sanchez to lead us in our invitation.
Good Father, thank you for everything you have done for our country for you today to ask, to guide us, to make the decision that will impact our community. And as you bless our military personnel, you protect them, and we'll... they especially as you allow us to make the best decision for our community. And those decisions improve the quality of life for our city, and the City of Arlington. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America, into the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We're glad to have you here at our City Commission meeting tonight. We'd like to begin that meeting with item one, Public Announcement of Events. And Public Information Officer Deveralska will give you some information.
Sir, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. Before we get to the slides, just a quick reminder, if you haven't checked the sports page, our RGV White Wings won the United League Baseball Championship by a score of six to four last night on their home field. So they swept that series three to zero, and I believe the last time they won a title was 2000, when it was the Texas Louisiana League. So I'm sure we all congratulate the White Wings, and they'll probably celebrate the entire offseason. A brief recap on Blues on the Hill, there was a really big crowd there by 8:00 PM, and the crowd was extremely enthusiastic. And as the slides note, we had Commissioner Laal and Commissioner Sanchez there, schmoozing with some of the entertainment and employees. So that was a real spectacular event, as always. We've got an upcoming event later this month with diabetes awareness. I believe we announced this last time, but we want to reemphasize it's open to the public, it's absolutely free, it's on Saturday, August 30th, from 2:00 till 3:00. Anyone with questions can contact the Harlingen Public Library at (216) 5821 or (216) 5809. And you don't necessarily have to be a diabetic, this is for family, friends, everybody that's interested, whether you're in the education community, the health community, the public is welcome to attend that. Also, we've got a big upcoming event with our festival, y ceremonia civil del Dia de la Independencia in Harlingen, from 1:00 to 9:00 on Saturday, September 13th. That's going to be free admission, of course, open to the public. It's one of our community events, just to celebrate our culture and our neighborhoods. The public's welcome to bring their own lawn chairs and blankets. There's going to be sort of two aspects, there'll be live music from 1:00 PM to 6:30 PM, and then the doors to the municipal auditorium will open, and the official ceremony will be from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. The Council of Mexico will be a guest speaker. And along with all the other musical entertainment and cultural events, I'm told by the committee, there will be some special surprises they have that they haven't even publicized, so they want to keep that under wraps a little bit. But they're inviting everyone to wear colorful Mexican apparel to represent Mexico's colors and ethnic heritage, so we're looking forward to that event in the near future. A little bit farther down the line on our calendars, on Saturday, September 27th, and Sunday, September 28th, big two-day event, it's the Outdoor Show and Sell Expo for pre-owned and new boats, ATVs, RVs, I guess if it moves and it's outdoors, it's going to be there. The Harlingen Convention and Visitors Bureau is partnering with 26.2 Consulting Group, and it's going to be held at Greyhound Valley Race Park. They've got a website, www.outdoorexpo texas.com. Admission is only $5, which is pretty low compared to a lot of the other expos that come to our region. So it's going to be kind of a one-time, unique event to bring together sellers, owners, everybody that's interested in fishing, hunting, boating, capping, and anything outdoors. So we look forward to a big turnout on that. On Labor Day, Monday, September 1st, all of our city offices will be closed, although I believe on the website it lists phone numbers if you've got a water emergency. And of course, police and fire will be on duty for that. A couple other late notices that came into the newsroom is, I believe it's next Wednesday, there's going to be a public hearing for the comprehensive plan, for the draft version of the comprehensive plan. There's going to be a reception at 5:00 here at the first floor of City Hall. And then, of course, the public is welcome to that and participate. The actual public hearing is scheduled to start at 5:30 on Wednesday. So we'll be reviewing the draft comprehensive plan and look forward to getting plenty of public input. We were fortunate to get a lot of input to begin with, and that process is going to continue. I also wanted to mention that the Palms Behavioral Health Groundbreaking is scheduled for Thursday, August 28th at 1:00 PM, and that's located at the corner of Hale and Victoria, over by Harlingen Medical Center. So we hope city officials and the public will attend that event also. I think that is just about all I have, but if anyone has any other questions from the public, please contact me, and I'll help them track down further details or find some other events. Oh, that reminds me of one more that I almost forgot. There is going to be an incredibly unique event, a first of its kind in the valley, apparently, that's coming to Harlingen on Saturday, September 6th. There'll be the Tri-Girl Sprint Triathlon. I've seen him on television, now I'm going to get a chance to see him live. It's going to start at 7:00 AM for the early birds on Saturday, September 6th, at Victor Pool. There's going to be 300 meters of swimming, then biking for 10 miles, then there's a run for three miles. There's an entry fee, but the deadline for registration isn't until Wednesday, September 3rd. The details and everything are at Bicycle World, the phone number is (423) 3168. The proceeds from this event are going to go to Share the Road. It's also sponsored by USA Triathlon, and some of the proceeds will also go to the Humane Society of Harlingen. So we're looking very much forward to that. Bicycle World tells me there's never been an all-female sprint triathlon of this type in our region, so that's a very unique event that Harlingen's going to be able to host there the first weekend in September. Thank you, everybody.
I want to announce that this, since September, there's another group that's going to be with us. He's been with us all the time, the Tru Federalis, a federal group that they work with, they encourage, and they call Amanda a little bit late, but they're going to be with us too.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Very good. Great. Thank you. Item three is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 6, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'd like to hear a motion to... Is there a second?
Second.
All of us, if they're a say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next would be a consent agenda, items 4A through D.
Excuse me, ma'am, we skipped item two.
We did skip item two.
Yes, sir.
Item two.
Commissioner Resmar. Of his tires, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to skip item two. Want to hear all about...
I want to hear about tires.
Neighborhood Clean Sweep, no, August 5, 2014, from North Parkwood, from 77 Sunshine Strip to 25th Street, including Riverland, Little Island, District 3.
District 3, this is Commissioner Resmar's district, and I'll just make it quick. We, you see some of the trash and debris that we picked up. We picked up a total of 8.3 tons of debris, and a total of 36 tires were also removed from the area. See some of the tires. It was a very successful clean sweep. Our next one is September 13th, from South 26th Street to South 27th, to include Redford to Jupiter Street. So if anybody's interested, please let us know, and we want to thank everybody that participated. I also want to announce that we have our community-wide trash out day on August 23rd, from 8:00 AM to noon at Olive Park and Union Street.
I just want to say that I was the volunteer, and along with the staff, we picked up eight tons of stuff. I was kind of tuckered out at the end of the morning.
Thank you for volunteering.
I lived to tell about it.
Okay, well, these are great, these are really important for the community. It helps keep our city clean and binding, and not only for our customers and our guests, but for everyone who lives here, and it's important that we keep our city clean. This is one way that we've helped do that. Thank you for everybody that participated. Next, we'll be down, here are the consent agenda 4A through D. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
To make the motion, we adopt the consent agenda.
All of us, if they're a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item five, the second public hearing to solicit comments from the public for or against the City of Arlington proposed tax rate of 0.588827 per $100 valuation for fiscal year 2014-15. I'll be in.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This is the second public hearing of two that are required before a vote can be taken on the tax rate. The tax rate that's being proposed is 0.588827, which is the same tax rate that we've had for the prior five years. Prior to that, it was 0.059. This is a tax rate that we've used to calculate revenues for the fiscal year 2014-15, and the staff is recommending that this go forward for the next meeting. We would, once this is approved, we would go to the second. The first meeting and the second meeting in September, it would be adopted.
And on those 59 cents, if it's a house that costs $65,000, they're going to have to pay $383 more, right?
When it was 59 cents?
Right.
Or, well, when it was 59, it's less now, but it's been this way for the past six years. So I don't have a calculation of what it used to be at 59 cents, because we're keeping the same rate.
Okay. This is not, again, this is not a...
A public hearing.
There is no increase to the tax rate.
There is, there is no increase.
I'd like to open the public hearing. Does anyone want to speak for or against the proposed tax rate?
Another shot at 285 at the Spunless. I personally think that, like, it's going to stay, and it should stay. But what I would like to ask is how come Mr. Yumon has never publicly come forth like he did in Los Indios, and promoted Los Indios Bridge to enhance his...
Okay, that's not...
Well, no, but I'm just saying that in order...
That's not the subject, and in fact, it's against the requirements of the ordinance for you to address any member of the commission in that manner, so...
Well, I'm not, I'm just saying that...
You can talk about the tax rate.
He hasn't, you know, he was there.
All right, please sit down.
Well, I don't think it's fair.
If you're not going to talk about the tax rate, then you have to sit down.
Keep it down. Thank you.
All right, does anyone else want to speak for or against the tax rate? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, go to item, skip the P and Z items right now, and go to item 13. Just to consider the approval of the HUBC, Arlington Economic Development Proprieties Board Action to enter into agreement between the Development Proprietary Arlington and Cameron County and SpaceX Corporation. And we'll ask Rodel, ours, the second director of the EDC, to help, to remind us, although I don't think we really have this needed reminding, but this is all about.
I'm going to ask three ladies to come join me up here for a minute. Karen, Lauren. As you all know, SpaceX has made an announcement to build a launch facility for rockets at Boca Chica Beach in Cameron County. I'm going to let Karen or Lauren kind of give a little briefing of what they're at with the project. These ladies all work for SpaceX directly or indirectly. And then, basically, what the EDC has done is participated in a larger incentive package. And most of you all have been in our ADC functions, our ADC meetings, where we talked about this probably since about a year ago. And we think that participating with Brownsville Cameron County in this kind of project is something that's going to help the region, and should be something that is kind of a transference, if you will, that Harlingen is doing. And we hope that everything that SpaceX has said they're going to do happens, and then some. So with that, let them update us a little bit.
Mayors, members of the council, community, thank you so much for having us here today, giving us a chance to thank you, your community, and the entire region for the support we've seen for our project. Karen Chenorek with SpaceX, in honor of saying my name, where I'm from. And so we have announced, as you may have seen a couple weeks ago, I've had a lot of attention with the governor, that SpaceX does intend to build the first of its kind commercial orbital space launch facility near Boca Chica Beach here in Cameron County. And we, as I've said, really appreciate the support that we've seen from all the directions, all the areas in the, in the region. We are working towards closing out some of the agreements that we have been negotiating with various communities and the state. And so we look forward to kind of getting to the very final point of those negotiations, making sure that we have all of these agreements in place, and moving forward towards a groundbreaking at the location in the near term. So thank you so much. We are rapidly moving towards that really final, final point. We're actually putting shovels in the dirt, and we look forward to actually seeing rockets launch from this area in the next couple of years, once we break ground and build that facility. Thank you. Any questions?
Welcome. Welcome to Harlingen.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any of the other representatives want to say anything?
I'll get Karen some of that.
Do I hear a motion to approve the, the EDC's action to...
Still moved, second.
Any discussion? All of us, if they're a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. We're delighted to be able to participate in this, you know, in this regional project, and a project that we know is going to be good for all of the communities in Cameron County and for the state of Texas. And we look forward to that groundbreaking in SpaceX, welcoming SpaceX through our community here in Cameron County. And Harlingen is here to support this project in this way and in many other ways. So we're proud to be part of it, and thank you for helping us to develop this agreement.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting myself, my colleague Lauren, and other members of our team as we've been traveling back and forth to the region over the last couple of years. We certainly spent some time here in Harlingen, and we've really enjoyed that time and appreciated the support from the community, the camaraderie that we found. And we look forward to growing that relationship as we work towards having the facility here, building the facility, and then operating it for many, many, many years to come. So thank you.
All right, great. We look forward to it. Thank you. Item 14 is considered to take action to approve a resolution admitting the development corporation just your budget. Rodel?
Mayor, City Commissioners, again, this is an item that we've discussed during the EDC board, and some of you were present, and we went through details on it. Basically, it's an amendment to the budget that we've got for this fiscal year, reallocating some funds, adjusting some numbers in terms of revenues. One of the, the total revenues that we're adjusting is $320,936. Of that, most of it is $120,000 in sales tax, and then a fund balance transfer of $112,493 that was not occurring. So we're reducing the fund balance transfers that we had projected, because we didn't spend as much money as we projected to spend, which is not a bad thing. On top of that, if you look at our expenses, operational expenses, we had about $50,000 in savings in our salaries and employee benefits, and another $50,000 in professional legal fees that helped our operations be reduced by a bit over $91,000. We also have not spent all our money on one particular project, which is the Bass Pro Shops, no build zone, if you will, the parking lot that we had anticipated to build. At this point, we don't have to build it yet, and so there's about $200,000 savings that we anticipate in that project as well. And thus, we were trying to clean up our budget a little bit, and if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Accounts, number?
It's getting closer to a balanced budget. Next year, it definitely will be a balanced budget.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Still moved, second.
Any discussion? All of us, if they're a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 15, considered to take action to approve ordinance of first reading, pending chapter 51, reduce amount of commodity water granted within water-based fees and to adjust waste water-based fees necessary to fund the capital improvement program. We have Josh Fields, who's the chairman of our utility board.
Not the chairman yet, but I am Water Works trustee. My name is Josh Fields, and I'll happily answer any questions about the ordinance.
We have had workshops with Water Works and talked extensively about the issue at hand, Mayor.
This is unanimous recommendation of the...
It is a unanimous recommendation from our board, and like Carlos said, we have had numerous workshops with the city council and staff, and everybody feels like we're in agreement on this.
I recognize also Richard Del Santos, a member of the utility board, also here.
We are in agreement.
See any others that are here, but this is a, this will be a phased-in, over 48 months small increase.
Forty months, Mayor.
Forty months.
Forty months.
Forty, about forty months, 10 cents a month, or total, a base increase of $4.
Yes, sir.
Necessary to fund the capital program to finish out the water treatment and waste park treatment facilities that will have safe and outstanding water and treatment facilities for years to come. So that, ask the city attorney to read the caption.
Ordinance, the City of Harlingen, Texas, admitting chapter 51, section 51.003 and 51.017 of chapter 51 of the Harlingen City Code, as amended to amend grades for potable water and sewage, and providing for publication, ordaining other matters related to the form.
Is there a motion about the ordinance on first reading?
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us, if they're a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you all for your hard work on this, and it's been, you've done a great job in coming up here, a good plan that'll be good for the City of Harlingen for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, item 16 is considered to take action to approve the city manager's appointment.
Mayor Commissioners, I wanted to give you some background. The staff has done an interview, several internal applicants for the position of fire chief. After interviewing them, and it was a very tough, very competitive field, my recommendation for a woman at fire chief will be Chief, Inorm Chief Rogelio Roy Rubio. Mr. Rubio has been Inorm Fire Chief since March 2014 for the City of Harlingen. He had previously been Fire Chief for the cities of Wesleco and Magallan. He also served as a fire academy instructor for South Texas College, and is the regional fire academy coordinator for Texas Technical College. And in addition to his fire chief experience, Chief Rubio served as class coordinator instructor for the United States Department of Homeland Security. He has over 30 years of public service employment, with over 24 of those years in the fire service. And he also holds numerous fire certifications, including Delta Master firefighter. He is here, present. I do want to acknowledge also Cedilo Rodriguez, who was one of the applicants, and I want to thank him especially, because he has been one of the key pieces for a successful transition. Cedilo, thank you for everything you've done, and, you know, we appreciate it and hope that you'll be here for a long time with us. And I want to acknowledge all of the applicants from the fire department. We were very, very impressed with all of them. We have a lot of capacity, and I think in the future, we're going to have a lot of those that can be, that can serve as our, as our future chief.
And is there a motion to approve the city manager's appointment?
I'll second that.
Discussion. All of us, if they're a say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, please go.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening, and I just want to share with you, I've been here, like the city manager said, for the last five months. I've worked right alongside a group of very dedicated professional firefighters that I consider now part of wholeheartedly, and I thank you for that, and I continue to support them, and they will continue to support our community and provide excellent service. On behalf of my family, I thank you for your vote, I'm confident, and we will continue doing a good job for the City of Harlingen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So far, you've kept the storms away, so that's good. You've done a great job.
Yeah, we could do some.
Appreciate it.
Knock on wood and keep your fingers crossed. All right, item, is anybody here on the, on the, we're doing a little bit of that white line? Just Joel, you don't count. Member of the public, not the state. Okay, item six, a public hearing considered, ordinance of first reading, pending city department study ordinance 0727, section 8.03G, special off-street parking regulations to amend off-street parking requirements in the downtown district. Section 16, not conforming uses and structures to clarify the term reasonable value referring to first description of not conforming use included provisions addresses off-street parking for similar uses of existing affected buildings.
Here we go, Mayor Commissioners, this amendment was drafted after staff had received some input from a committee generally comprised of commissioners, chamber officials, and members of the board of realtors on improving the occupancy of the existing vacant buildings in the city as well as overall with redevelopment. Generally, there's two amendments to the special off-street parking requirements, which is section 8.03, and two amendments to section 16, which is not conforming uses and structures. Under section 803, the current ordinance basically reads that there is no off-street parking requirement for new uses which occupy existing buildings in the downtown district. That's going to remain the same. However, if there is a new construction, or the square footage of the building has increased, then the current parking requirements apply. That's the way the ordinance currently reads. The proposed amendment would mainly state that if, that off-street parking would also not be required if it's a new construction on a lot which was previously occupied with a structure of similar size in the downtown district. And the second amendment to that specific provision in the downtown district would also state that if you're going to do an addition to an existing vacant building in the downtown district, only the parking requirement would be for that new, for that new addition, not the entire structure. Again, these amendments are designed to help improve redevelopment of the downtown area, and that's reflected in the ordinance attached in the packet. The second amendment would apply to section 16, which is not conforming uses and structures. This applies to the city as a whole. The first amendment would be just to clarify the term reasonable value to reflect current market value. Whenever you have a reconstruction of a non-conforming use, there's a provision which states if it's a partial destruction, then that partial destruction may be rebuilt so long as the destruction is not more than 75% reasonable value. And that reasonable value term is going to change to current market value to clarify that term. The second amendment under not conforming use would apply to a structure that's occupied by non-conforming use. And the current regulation states that if you have a structure that's occupied by non-conforming use... use, and that use has been discontinued for ninety days, it's got to comply with the current parking requirements. The proposed amendment to that section would basically state, however, if it's a similar use going into that existing building, and you're not going to change the footprint of that building, then that use can operate with that existing parking that is currently existing. Public hearing was conducted by the P and Z Commission, staff and P and Z Commission recommending approval of the amendments subject to the ordinance.
All right. Public hearing, is there anyone who wants to speak for or against this change of the ordinance? Hearing, no one opposed a public hearing, go out, the council to read the caption.
Ordinance amending the city of Arlington zoning ordinance number zero seven dash twenty-seven, the section eight one oh three G, special off-street parking to amend off-street parking requirements in downtown improvement district, and section sixteen, non-conforming uses and structures, to clarify the term reasonable value when referring to the destruction of the non-conforming use, and to include a provision which addresses off-street parking in existing vacant buildings, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to adopt the ordinance of first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, might sign, motion carries. Item seven, public hearing, consider ordinance of first reading for a specific use permit to allow adult business electronic cigarette store, general retail GR district located fourteen eighteen East Tyler Avenue, suite twelve, bearing legal description of lots seven through twelve, block four, Windsor Place Edition, applicant Mario A.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow an adult business, which would be an e-cigarette business out of the existing Tyler Square Shopping Center, which is located on the corner of Tyler and Seventy-Seven on Sunshine Strip. It's a thousand square foot suite. This is the subject suite that he's proposing operate the business. It's located between the Metro PCS and Mobile X-rays. Request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments, staffed and receiving any objections to the request. A report was also provided by the police department, who's also had no objections to the request, and noted on the site that there was no service calls for that area in the last two years. Public hearing was conducted by the P and Z Commission, there's no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff and P and Z Commission recommend approval subject to the applicant maintaining the required off-street parking, obtaining proper state permits, and complying with requirements for the appropriate city departments. No technical questions, and the applicant is also present for questions.
I'd ask a public hearing, if anyone might speak for or against this item.
For the record, Jose Rubio Junior, I'm up for new business, promoting businesses, but it appears that we have a lot of this adult businesses, stores, starting to come into town. And I heard there was a task force went and visited the one at Sun Valley Mall. Now, I don't understand how, you know, when we, when we call this a business of electronic cigarette store, how a business can survive. I'm a little concerned about what else goes on in that business, and I'd like for Mr. Olivo to explain what other stuff do they sell there, because I don't think you can make money, just, you know, not for rent purposes, you know? And who checks the compliance? Are there any compliance rules?
Basically, according to his application, he stated that what he's mainly going to sell is e-cigarettes and the accessories that go with that e-cigarette, which is the liquids that go with that particular product. That's all he specified in his application, of course. Staff, code enforcement, be monitoring, you know, the inventory to make sure he complies with the specific use permit request.
There's going to be monitored, isn't there?
City staff, code enforcement, planning and zoning, as per the specific use permit request.
How many stuff have you got already, aren't you? Cigarettes?
E-cigarettes, I believe this is the second one that's obtained a specific use permit. The other one is on South Seventy-Seven Sunshine Strip.
This is just the second one that we have?
Yeah.
Okay, continuing, so, you know, there was a report, and I may be mistaken, I'll apologize to the owner of the business beforehand, I may be wrong with this, but I'm a little concerned because, you know, they're starting to talk about certain synthetic drugs through the oil and being able to absorb them through electronics cigarettes, and I would like that, you know, Mr. Olivo talks about just code enforcement, et cetera. I would like to see the police department take an active role in monitoring and checking this business, because I really don't know. I mean, I'm, I'll tell you right now, I'm ignorant about what's going on there, but I believe in any business coming into Arlington that's good for the community. So I'm not objecting to the business, I'm just objecting to what it can lead to. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who might to speak for or against this ordinance?
You're on the shop, I'm against it, let me tell you why. I'm for it, that you bring business here, and this is a free country, and you can do anything you want to do. However, when it gets close to the metro, and all the people go there and pay their bills, they take their children, and that's close to a lot of children that are being exposed to this kind of activity, and it should be monitored more by the police as well. I was at Water Works sitting there, just eating, and all of a sudden, to my left and to my right, and there were children using those electronic cigarettes. I get up, and I said, "You're too young to be smoking, you can't smoke in here." He says, "Yes, they are, they're legal. I bought them at Stripes." So see, who is monitoring? Those things are dangerous. And are they going to say it's just for the adults to go in there and get them? Anybody can get them. I am very much opposed. I'm sorry, I have nothing, I have nothing against this man. It may be a different location, it may be a little further out of town, but this is not a good thing. It's not a good message to send to the community. Thank you.
Let me just clarify, on the, on the police department's report, they really know that they would be enforcing all city ordinances pertaining to this type of business as well. So PD would be enforcing all regulations pertaining to this type of business in response to the applicant's concern.
I don't see any problem with this order. I think there's people that they want to bring the store over here, and I'm pushing the other city regulations, and we have to give that opportunity to them.
Is there anyone else who might speak for or against?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mario Cardinals, the gentleman that wants to open the place up. There's nothing illegal with this place, it's going to be run by me, a grown-up person, and I'll be monitoring all the kids. I've ran a store for forty years, I know all the laws, and everything will be done the way it's supposed to be. Pass.
All right, thank you. Anyone else who might speak for or against specific use permit? Hearing, now a post of public hearing, go out, item B, which is considered to take action to approve ordinance of first reading for a specific use permit. Go read the caption.
Ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number zero seven dash twenty-seven, city of Arlington, issues specific use permit to Mario A. Cardinals, to allow for an adult business electronic cigarette store in general retail GR district located fourteen eighteen East Tyler Avenue, suite twelve, bearing legal, a legal description of lots seven through twelve, block four, Windsor Place Edition, subject to one, maintaining the required off-street parking according to city regulations, two, maintaining the proper state and city permits, three, comply with the Arlington code of ordinances, chapter one, thirty point oh seven, and law assumptions, and comply with the requirements administered by the planning and zoning building inspections by our provincial police and environmental health departments, providing for publication or obtaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second. Any discussion? I, I do share the concern that Mr. Rubio expressed about the possible misuse of these e-cigarettes. There's been, I think, some recent coverage about the liquefaction of marijuana being used in these e-cigarettes, and so while the act of itself is not, you know, there's nothing illegal about, and we have presumed that Mr. Sun Valley is going to operate illegal business, and that's what, he's entitled to do that, but I certainly do think that we need to, we, the police department needs to monitor this and make sure that there isn't any misuse, and as much as we can, and I'm certainly glad, because of these recent reports of the use of the liquefaction of purified marijuana in these, we've included e-cigarettes in the non-smoking ordinance.
Mayor, I'd also like to, I think Joe was talking about a place in the mall, and maybe you can correct us, we've approved, this will be our second one, the first one was the one that's on Sunshine Strip, this is going to be our second, but do we not also have stores that are selling e-cigarettes even though they're not exclusively? Because these are exclusive shops, that's all they sell.
Right.
But are they also allowed to sell them like in Circle K and some of the other?
They are, but, you know, those don't require a specific use permit. However, if the primary business is an e-cigarette business, and it's located in a commercial district, it would require one, but if their business is located in an industrial district, an adult business doesn't require a specific use permit. When we say adult business, we mean a product whose certain product or services are restricted to people to over the age of eighteen. So if it's an industrial, they don't need an SEP, but if it's in a commercial, like a general retail district, it wouldn't need a specific use permit.
But I, what I, I think the question I'm asking, like, let's say it's an adult bookstore, they sell e-cigarettes, they're already selling adult items.
Right.
But you go to a Circle K or a convenience store, a corner grocery store, they're selling them as if they're selling tobacco or?
Right, right, and those would be allowed without a specific use permit, because that's not their primary business.
And so the only reason he's asking for specific use, because that's all he's going to sell in that book.
Right. Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, might sign, motion carries. Item A, public hearing, consider ordinance of first reading, named the street along Valley International Airport Terminal to Heritage Way and the street south of Valley International Airport Terminal and north of Blue Port ninety-nine to Airport Drive.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting that the streets along the airport terminal, which is this section here, be named Heritage Way, and the streets south of the terminal, which is this section here, be named Airport Drive. The existing businesses along that area are already using the subject street names in their, in their address. This is just to officialize that particular street name. Staff did notify the appropriate city departments within the Water Works, Tech, E M S, Cameron County, and staff did not receive any objections to the requested street names. Public hearing was conducted by the P and Z Commission, and our last P and Z meeting, staff and P and Z commission are recommending approval of the request.
All right, is public hearing, public hearing, if anyone would like to speak regarding this name, naming. All right. Most public hearing, go out, P, consider take action to approve ordinance of first reading to name the street along Valley International Airport Terminal to Heritage Way, and the streets south of the National Airport Terminal and north of Blue Port ninety-nine to Airport Drive, as the council to read.
Ordinance of City of Arlington, name the street along Valley International Airport Terminal to Heritage Way and the street south of the airport terminal and north of Blue Port ninety-nine to Airport Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to adopt the ordinance of first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, might sign. That's really more of a housekeeping thing than anything else. That's what their names are. Item I, public hearing, consider an ordinance of first reading to amend the city of Arlington's zoning ordinance number zero seven dash twenty-seven, section two, definitions to amend the definition of daycare to establish a process which allows daycare to be operated out of a church in all designated zoning districts for a church.
Mayor Commissioners, this amendment was drafted after staff had received some requests from citizens to operate a daycare out of the, out of the church. Under the current requirements, a daycare is only permitted in commercial districts like neighborhood services district, office district, general retail district, and industrial district is allowed by right, whereas a church is permitted in pretty much twelve out of the thirteen zoning districts in the city, the only district that a church is not allowed is a not designated zoning district. Proposed amendment would allow a daycare to be operated out of the church, subject to complying with the park, parking, loading space, and as well as complying with appropriate building health and fire code requirements. Public hearing was conducted by the P and Z Commission, there's no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff is recommending approval subject to the ordinance.
So this is open to all churches with the boundaries of Arlington?
Right, correct.
These are different nursery, adults and children, different.
Right, this is for the daycare, children's daycare.
And so I'm guessing there's some sort of state agency that comes and inspects and regulates this?
Yes, there is a state agency that does inspect that, correct.
Okay, I, A is a public hearing, considering, most of them might speak for or against this ordinance. Lot, hearing, now a post of public hearing, go out, the, the council read the caption.
Ordinance amending the city of Arlington zoning ordinance, ordinance number zero seven dash twenty-seven, section two, definitions, to amend the definition of a daycare to establish a process which allows a daycare to be operated out of a church, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance of first reading?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, might sign, motion carries. Item ten, is a public hearing, consider an ordinance of first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general GR, general retail district located at six forty North Daycare Drive, bearing a legal description of block four, block one, South Point, subject to two, applicant.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to operate a bar lounge out of existing, a little over four thousand square foot suite that's located on the, on the east side of Daycare Drive, also known as the area of South Point Shopping Center. This is a subject property, this is the existing building. The previous use of the building has been a bar lounge. Under the name Hot Shots, the proposed applicant is going to continue with the same name for the bar. The hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday from three thirty P M to two A M. Request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments, neither of the city departments had any objections to the request. The police department also reviewed the request and is included on the report, that it provides required sufficient lighting, provided licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, as well as maintaining the surveillance video of the property. Public hearing was conducted by the, by the P and Z Commission, there's no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff at P and Z Commission recommend approval subject to the applicant, maintaining the required off-street parking, providing licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, providing the surveillance video, and complying with the requirements for the appropriate city departments. No technical questions, and the applicant is also present for questions.
Yeah, is this bar currently open?
It is, it is currently open under a different applicant.
Okay, so Mr. Cameron Lane will be a new owner.
Right, correct.
But I saw, in looking at the documents, I saw his name in one of the police reports. He reported somebody who stole services or whatever.
I think he was an employee prior.
Yeah, that may have been the case.
Like the mentors, seemed like when I read the reports. One of the questions I had, you know, I'm not familiar with how often a police call is initiated in a bar, but in the two-year period that we're talking about, there were roughly a hundred and four calls, which is about a call every seven days at this location, and the police department doesn't have a problem with that. I took out the calls where they were just spot checks, and didn't include those. I'm just wondering, you know, what's normal for?
I know out of those calls, at least according to the police report, twenty-nine triggered in the police report, like, could you say what's the exact number to require, you know, additional? They did specify that they have to maintain the lighting, security guard. We don't have a police chief here.
It did make fascinating reading.
I got tired of reading, writing police reports, and.
Yes, sir. I'm just curious about, is that a higher-than-usual number? You know, I took out your spot checks on them, which was ninety-four, and came about with like a hundred and four calls that were made, and I'm just wondering if that's out of the ordinary, or? I don't know that it would be out of the ordinary. I mean, I would certainly hear from staff if we were answering major concern calls out there or anything, so I haven't heard anything like that.
It's like normal.
I'm sorry?
It's like normal.
Yeah, I would say, I would say.
Yeah, I would say, I would say it's fine.
All right, well, it, it is, it is sort of striking when you, when you read it, if you're just, if you're not, if you're not in business like yes, because you look at this and.
It's a lot of, a lot of reports.
It appears to be, I mean, my, my thought was maybe we should open a substation next to it because we'd probably pay for the overhead, you know, on the cost that we would save on.
Right.
And it's certainly a place where you could buy legal commodities, apparently.
It's a TV show. We've had some, we've had some.
What would be the value of not, is, would there be some safe, would there be some safety value in not, you know, granting this S U P? Kind of, I know we've done this before, and I never really get a very good feel for, you know, when the, you know, you know, what the level of illegal activity at the, at the establishment should be before we say no. Maybe we'll, you know, what, is there some utility to saying no? Or is it gonna continue under the other ownership anyway? Do we think it's gonna improve under the ownership?
You know, that's, that's an incredibly difficult question.
And I'm not necessarily addressing all of those questions to you, I'm sort of addressing it to the commission as well, it seems like this is a hotspot and that maybe, you know, if we put it down for a while, maybe then most people would go elsewhere, maybe not within the city of Orange.
Haven't we in the past had a review period?
We have, in certain cases, it's been limited to six months or sometimes a year, they could be included in the opinions to come back and review it after, for example, six months.
But at any point in time that the commission can review the, the S U P, if there are any concerns.
I think the last few that we've done, we've done a six-month review because of this, just to make sure that they have a handle on everything, and then I think, I think after the twelve, you have to correct me, after the twelve they're permanently in? Is that what happens? Y'all do a re-inspection and?
It does, well, after the twelve months, that's definitely in the downtown district or any other place outside the district, you can limit it to six months, and then after that, you wouldn't have limited for another six months, that's up to you, the commission if they want to do that.
I've just never seen them come back, I would just, that's why I'm asking the question. I know that we, we've done a six-month review.
Right.
And then in six months, y'all review it, and then if everything looks good?
It's approved in perpetuity.
It's, it's, it's renewed in perpetuity.
Maybe we could just recommend to the chief that he monitor it and advise us if it gets to be an excessive amount.
Okay, sure.
Whatever that, I mean, on this.
I just, Rich, wanted to ask legal counsel, at any point in time if there's concerns dealing with the public safety, that those could be brought up to the commission, the commission has the right to reconsider, wouldn't it?
I think that's, that's possible, although in the past, what we've generally done is this six-month thing where we've had an area, we've had one where there's a problem, so we can get those people back in front of us with the reports.
And I think we.
I would probably prefer some, something definite rather than having.
And I agree with the, but I'm just saying, if, after the six-month trial period, the commission still would hold the right if there's any concerns.
I think just from our standpoint, being wise and, and making good choices, I think it should come back to us in six months and let us at least see, you know, this is the police call report for the last six months, and allow us to reconsider those. I, I know it becomes tedious, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna cover a lot of these, but I, I think it just.
Yeah, I mean, you can do that, but remember, actually, the city manager is correct, the reason for the use permit is to put conditions on it that they have to comply with, and they have to comply with those conditions as long as they're the, the owner and the applicant and the operator. If, if ownership changes, they have to come back for the use permit. If there's ever what's considered a violation of that use permit, then we have the right to bring that use permit back before you and you can revoke that use permit, so that's the whole idea behind the use permits, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding community and the community as a whole, so you, you do have a right to bring those things back if they're, if they create a problem. But, but putting a limited timeframe on it sends a message to the applicant that there's an issue here and he needs to be on his toes about, about avoiding the past problems, trying to do the best to avoid that.
I think the owner needs to know that the commission is gonna be looking at the conduct of the, of his and that he needs to discourage the kind of clientele that have been described in these police reports in the last two years, and I think he has, he can do that, and I think they can do that if they want to, and we have an opportunity to review this in six months, so I, I think that's a good idea.
It's affecting their livelihood if they don't do that.
And I think, well, can correct me if I'm wrong, we could do it on first reading and then put the second reading, we can add a provision that it's a six-month.
Correct, that's correct.
Approval, if, if you wanna do it, we could do the first reading tonight, then it comes back and we can, it'll, we'll add that provision that it's a six-month review.
I don't think I ever got to the public hearings, anyone like, uh, over the public hearings, anyone like to speak in favor or against the N S U P?
I said, Louis Jones, went there and answered the road. There's a method, we have a nuisance bar that T B C has adopted to stop a nuisance bar. What I'm seeing here is, I didn't read the reports, but when you clearly have a hundred and four reports of all sorts, that means that code enforcement or the police or who's ever in charge is not doing their job, because you see, you, you keep on adopting the same rules, and I've been talking about this for about ten years plus, you keep adopting rules, videotaping, having security officers, you know, you put a burden, you know, I talked to one of the local bar owners, and he said, "I really can't afford a, a security officer on Thursdays, even the city's mandated me on Thursdays." He says, "So I don't do it, but there's no one to check up on that," you know, and he's making a business decision because he's hurting. Now, I'm all for the business, you know, but the number itself shows that there's a problem, and if, if there was burglaries, that means that, you know, clearly there should be a review of the videotape. Did they comply with the videotape? If it's fights, did they comply with the security officers? This, this is the first time I've ever heard a hundred and four incident reports in all the time that I've been doing this, talking about the bars, I've never seen where business has that much. Now, the good thing is, is a brand-new owner, so I don't like to restrict him to six months either, you know, that, that puts a burden on him also, because just like you did with that bar owner for six months, he's gotta come back and he's gotta play the game and the charade and try to tell you that everything's okay, but it wasn't being fair to him, and he was a Hispanic business owner downtown and, and we're just not being fair, so I don't like the idea of a six-month period either. If we held, if we held the police department or code enforcement or whoever's in charge planning and zoning accountable, we wouldn't have this problem.
All right, is there a motion for, against the S U P?
Yeah, I'm the shop at two, two eighty-nine, on the farmers. Any business is busy and it's money, okay? It's not our fault we have a bunch of drunks in town and they're not responsible, and that's why we have the police department to monitor and check, but what is fair is fair. In other words, what is good for the goose is good for the ganter, I think they call it. Todos hijos de Dios, todos hijos al diablito. You cannot, selective prosecution, some people get punished for the other mistakes others made. You have to give them a chance, but to say to be coming like a little boy every six months, every six months, I mean, get real here, they're grown up and they're drunks and they like to drink, period.
Is there anyone else like to speak for against the S U P? Carry now, most of public hearing, ask the, the city attorney, read the caption.
The ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, the ordinance zero seven dash twenty-seven, the City of Orange to issue a specific use permit to adjust in Cameron Lane to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at six forty north of the daycare during a legal description of block four, block one, South Point subdivision unit two, subject to one, maintaining the existing off-street parking space in accordance with city regulations, two, obtaining and maintaining the proper state and T A B C permits, three, must repair the non-operable cameras and maintain video surveillance on all entrances and exits and maintain thirty-day retention of the video, four, provide adequate lighting on the premises, five, provide a licensed security guard in the parking lot during peak hours of operation on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from nine A, nine P M to two A M, six, comply with the requirements administered by the planning, building, fire, and police departments, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion about the ordinance?
Yeah, make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item eleven, consider tech action, grant carries, the City of Orange subdivision of Orange, zero seven, twenty-eight, section four, point, point, three, M, regardless of thirty-foot corner clip required on the southwest corner of Chalk River State subdivision, located on the corner of Harrison Avenue and Ellis Street, bearing legal description of zero point eight four two five acre tract of land comprised of all upon eight, zero point three four three acre tract out of block one, zero point zero five eight acre tract out of block two, and zero point five one acre tract of, sort of, area block five B, ground places, the, the, out in Black Garcia, area of Chalk.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a variance to the thirty-foot corner clip that's required on the southwest corner of the, the proposed re-subdivision. This is a subject property, it's a, like I mentioned, it's a re-subdivision, it's actually a re-subdivision of two, two lots and part of the third lot, as well as part of the alley. This is the property where the alley was recently abandoned. The proposed corner clip would generally be required on this corner here, the applicant is dedicating the corner clip on the north side of the property. The reason he's requesting the variance is because there's, he has an existing freestanding sign which is approved by, with a permit, and he's currently complying with the required of sign requirements. This is the existing sign on his property for his used car dealership, this is the sign that would be affected by the corner clip, this is a closer view of the sign. This diagram right here generally shows what the side triangle is, this side the city has near zoning orange, a twenty-foot side triangle which is measured from back of curb. This dot I drew in to represent the sign, so as you can see, the sign is not inside the side triangle, so it is not obstructing the line of sight. However, you, you were to dedicate a corner clip which is this triangle here, the corner clip is generally dedicated from the property line, so if the corner clip is dedicated, the sign would be in the right of way. The request was reviewed by the city department, by the city engineer and Techstat, city engineer and Techstat had no objections to the variance being granted. Staff and P and Z Commissioner are recommending approval to the request, being that there is a hardship in this case, there's, there's an existing sign on the subject property. The request of variance doesn't propose a safety issue, being that the, the sign is not inside the, the side triangle, and Techstat and city engineer have no objection to the variance being granted. I'll take any questions, and applicant is also present for questions.
Any questions? Is there a motion to grant the variance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item, well, consider tech action to extend Lifeline Heart of Worship's rental agreement for the promised end of water, right, including Wednesday evening services, August twentieth to February twenty-eighth, fourteen, fifteen.
Mayor Commissioners, Lifeline Heart of Worship.
Now, you can't, now you can't.
Is a, has been a good loyal customer of ours since two thousand and ten. In two thousand and ten, we extended a special rate to them based on the volume of rentals that they were taking at one particular time. Since they have been at the auditorium, their congregation has grown significantly, and they have outgrown the space that they had been using for their Wednesday evening services. They've come to us and asked, there is a provision in the Gordon Ordinance governing the rental of the auditorium that says that extra hours may be purchased, provided that you have an event on the books. Those hours don't necessarily have to be on the same day, they can be for rehearsal, they can be for additional setup. They would like for this to apply to them as well, so that they can relocate their Wednesday evening services from where they presently are to the auditorium. The auditorium is typically dark on Wednesday nights, this is kind of a win-win for all of us, it, it would result in unanticipated revenue for the auditorium, and at the same time, would give them a place to, to continue to grow their congregation.
Okay, is there a motion to?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go first.
We allocate a hundred dollars for electricity for that auditorium, has anybody ever gone out there and looked at that meter before an event starts and then when you start to cool that thing down and then afterwards, just to kind of measure how many kilowatts it takes to run one of these things?
We've never done that specifically, what we kind of have done is just taken the monthly, the monthly invoices and broken it up, and that's how we've arrived at that figure.
Does it stay at the, like seventy-eight degrees all the time?
We, at the beginning of this fiscal year, and we're actually working through some of this right now, there are some efficiency issues that we have right now in terms of the equipment. We had, the commission actually allocated funds at the beginning of the year to replace some of that air conditioning equipment. Of course, if you'll recall, that was also at the same time that the fire alarm system kind of went on the fritz for us, so what we ended up having to do was prioritize the fire alarm system. We still have money set aside to address that air conditioning, and what we're doing right now is working with those vendors, getting, getting quotes revised. Once that equipment does get replaced, we're gonna see a, we're gonna see a pretty dramatic utility savings.
My question was gonna be, on Wednesday, it's dark, but I, I understand we don't keep it air-conditioned week, the whole week long.
Right.
So you're gonna have to recool that for them for two hours, three hours?
Well, generally, we would start pre-cool, pre-cool about an hour before.
No, but how, how many hours are they gonna rent it on?
Five hours.
Five hours?
They'll be in there five hours.
I, I, I kind of agree with you, we just need to kind of get an idea of what it's really costing, but I, I agree with, you know, it's a very unreutilized.
Well, especially during the week, especially during the week, and so, yeah.
Do we have the electronic meters from A and P, the, where they don't come and radio broadcasts?
Oh, you mean all, are you talking about the ones that are, that are carried?
Yeah, the smart meters.
The smart meters.
Oh, yeah, yeah, on the building, well, when A and P switched over everything, they switched over.
Yeah, so I, to follow up with these guys' questions, I'm just curious, so what's it cost to run the joint?
Well, the, the air condition, the, the electricity runs about a hundred dollars a day, and that's based on, and that's based on, on years of, of the, the electric bill, the utility.
And, and then we'll have to have, do we have security there or janitorial service?
There will be all of that, there's a pro forma budget actually included in the, in the executive summary that lists out the cost for custodial and the cost for.
So will we be breaking even with a couple of?
We'll be making a little bit of money on it, we'll be, we'll be looking at about three thousand dollars net revenue for the term of the agreement.
There you go.
We're making money. Okay, well, but, you know, you'll actually be able to figure that, you can actually precisely figure it out after you start doing it.
Right, exactly, once we have a little bit of data.
It's gonna be a five-month deal, but as, as your mesmer points out, you really can measure, you'll be able to measure precisely the usage during that, exact time for.
Right, that five hours that they're there.
Yeah, yes, you see, what does it cost to chill for an hour?
And so, you know, you really need, you know, you really do need to monitor that, it's a point well taken, that, you know, we can figure that out, you can figure out that you're really making, whether it really is a remote generator or not.
Right, right, well.
But, but it seems to be likely we'll try it. Okay, is there any other questions? Is there a motion to extend the rental agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item seventeen, board appointments. And I have a re-appointment, banning very out to the promised community improvement board. Is there a motion to report appointments?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carry now, item eight, citizen communication.
We have Selah Carmona.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, South Carmona, two-three-one-eight-three, Ball Road. I'm the president of the Association for the Police Officers here in Hardin, as well as a, a member of the Collective Bargaining Committee. We have not, or will not, asked someone to publicly cover some of the issues in the collective bargaining agreements before those agreements are all satisfied, so we have not asked anyone to come up here and, and talk to the commission because of that, and so I apologize for anyone that has done that for us and trying to do it for us, but they are not representing the commission nor the association, and I just want to say that I apologize for any of those comments that were given out here in any other public meetings, and we will respect the integrity of the collective bargaining agreements. Just want to say that, thank you. Just want to say that, thank you.
Thank you.
We have Yolanda Shoffett.
Yolanda Shoffett, I want to speak on something that I was here at noon for a meeting, and it had to do that you all were going to approve, um, someone to do, uh, the work for the, I've always known for 30 years, it was enterprise, then they said it was Blaschka Tower, then they said it was McKendlin Tower, and then they said, no, it's a Baxter Tower, make up your mind, what is it? Muy pisos. But anyway, to make the long story short, this place for 37 years never got any, any fixing of any sort. Everybody looked the other way. Oh, so much racketeering in there, prostitution, there was a murder there, there was, um, a human trafficking in there, everything you can imagine was downtown. That I saw has been there for the longest time. And now, of course, now that there was a swapping, all of a sudden, the E D C and the city commission and F O B board became a swapping place, the, it turned out to be like a flea market, okay? So they got this $350,000 building, uh, and gave it to Wayne Blaschka for that tower, which is going to cause a citizen tax registration, register worth $5 million to fix. Now, it's called Project Opportunity. Who is the opportunity for? Now, if it, that building's going to be for V A, to house V A, because if there's rumors that it's going to be housing V A, then so be it, to house homeless people, so be it. Now, another rumor says that they're going to put retail, so the opportunity will be for retail for what? Because it doesn't have parking space. Uh, there was a man, and I'm not going to say who it was, but he was a man, on one of the board says, "You know, we have a rip on one thing for one time, Yolanda, we should have taken a dynamite, blew that thing down, and made it to a beautiful new park with toilets, because you go downtown, and if you gotta go, you gotta go, and you, not, they want you to buy stuff from their stores, but they won't let you use the toilets. It should have been demolished, $5 million is a waste of taxpayers' money." Thank you.
We have Greg Smith.
I'm Gregory Smith. I live in Harlingen, in the, what is, Colonia, just outside of Harlingen here. I want to thank the city commission for opening a bridge and opening our road the very next day. We appreciate that. The road and the bridge has been now protected from encroachment that the development put on it. We will find out whether the rest of that is taken care of when they get a state inspection on the bridge, that should be fairly soon. What I came here for basically today is, you put up a three, the city put a three-way stop sign on Brazil Road and Tej. Waste of money, gentlemen. Uh, that's not going to slow down the people in our neighborhood, where we've got a petition for speed bumps, it's been approved, they're going to put them in, then it's going to be up to the city to radar the other end of, on your end down there. Stop sign is not going to do any good. All it's going to do is cause a wreck. I've been there 12 years, not one two-car accident on that street, not one. So what's stop sign about, especially considering the fact that the city installed a stop sign at your expenses and everything, on county property? There, we're, we're, I've been looking for the surveys in the, in the, uh, who justified this? It, it bounces around, nobody knows who did. Anyway, the speed bumps will be put in, and excessive speeding in, in the, in our neighborhood will stop, that will slow down, down there for y'all. It won't have that much anymore. The next thing was, Pittman Davis will start their packing season here before too long. When they start packing season, we can't get in and out of our, on the feeders without literally, you know, running a risk. It's, it's really bad down there. We need, Pittman Davis needs, stops, uh, needs, uh, no parking out there and also on Tej Road.
Wrap it up, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, wrap it up, thank you.
Sorry about that. But the city, the city needs to take notice, because we've been trying for years to get you to do something about Tej Road and out there on the freeway, and you don't do it.
Should be a phone stand.
He didn't hear you, Mayor.
So, Louis, for the record, Mr. Carmona just came up here and took a shot at me. Officer Carmona said, "I'm going to take the same shot back at him." There's a reason for collective bargaining, and there's only one reason, because of the officer's discontent. Mr. Carmona, you're right, I don't represent you or the Harlingen police department. Okay, well, he, he, he referred to me.
He didn't, he didn't...
Mayor, let me please finish, all right? I, I'm on my train of thought, you know?
He didn't address you by name.
Okay, well, he told me before that, and he told me before the hand that he was going to do that, and that's why he was going to come up here for it. So I've got 30 seconds still, because you interrupted me, just let me finish, all right? And I'll move on to another subject which is more important, okay? So for the record, I don't represent the Harlingen Police Association, okay? But I do get complaints, I do field complaints, and we did have a wreck unit, and we do have problems within the police department, and they call me because they use me to bring up their little problems like little children, okay? All right, let's go on to the next subject. This Saturday, I went to Blues of the Hill. I'm really disappointed, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez actually had the gall to tell the other people there not, to not offer me a plate of food because I didn't, because I was waiting for Mr. Sanchez for my V I P little bracelet, and Mr. Gonzalez believes that, you know, that, that's malicious, you know, Mr. Gonzalez. I don't understand why you would even consider doing that. There's one reason I sit behind there in that V I P area. My ears can't tolerate the loud music, I've seen years of rock and roll from my early years in disco, et cetera. So I sit back there and I kind of enjoy the music, you know? And I don't understand why you would make it a point to make sure that you told the employees, "You're dead, Mr. Gonzalez." They came and told me, and I hope that you don't do any damage to them, because you're notoriously the same person. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.